Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the April 23 legislative session for the Salisbury City Council. I would ask you please to silence any electronic devices, horns, beeps, phones, whatever you got, please silence them. If you needed to make a phone call, we ask that you do it outside the chamber. We appreciate it. If for some reason during the meeting, an emergency should arise, please leave in an orderly manner. When you exit, please make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit would be blocked, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. Should you need assistance, please ask and we'd be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I call the Reverend, Very Reverend Frida L. Malcolm, rector at St. Albans Episcopal Church for our invocation. Good evening Reverend.
Good evening. Let us pray. O gracious Creator, behold and visit the cities of this earth, especially the city of Salisbury. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Be with our leaders this evening as they take counsel for our city. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. Appreciate it. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Rudisill, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the April 2nd, 2018 work session minutes, April 2nd, 2018 closed session minutes, April 9th, 2018 regular meeting minutes, resolution number 2833 approving the reappointment of Nancy Robertson to the Friends of Poplar Hill Mansion for term ending April 2021, resolution number 2834 accepting a donation in the amount of $1,500 from the Salisbury Skate Park Committee, Inc., to be utilized for the construction of Phase Two of the Salisbury Skate Park, resolution number 2835 to change the employee handbook, section 0505 Family Leave to provide paid parental leave, and we have a manufacturing exemption request for Delmar Brewing Company, LLC, for equipment they purchased in 2016. And that's it for the consent agenda.
Any comments or questions? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Lowe, mic, yep, all right, we're ready. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's award of bid is for contract number 115-18 Heavy Duty Truck. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Field Operations to purchase a heavy-duty truck through Baylor, Inc., doing business as International Delmarva, utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract issued by the state of Delaware. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. Item 9, Contracts in Which the City Receives a Contract Price Negotiated by the State, County, or Other Governmental Entity pursuant to a Valid Contract. This charter designation therefore allows the City of Salisbury to participate in competitive solicitations issued and awarded by other governmental entities such as the state of Delaware. Contract GSS 16617 Heavy Duty Trucks was issued as a request for proposal on February 23rd, 2016 by the state of Delaware for the purpose of identifying vendors and executing a contract to purchase multiple types of heavy-duty trucks. As a publicly competed contract, this contract was then made available for use by other states and governmental entities through a participating addendum. After verifying the contract, pricing, terms, and conditions, the City of Salisbury Department of Procurement sought and received approval from the state of Delaware Director of Governmental Support Services to participate in the aforementioned contract. There are sufficient funds and account listed in your pocket to purchase the requested truck. The procurement department requests council's approval to award contract 115-18 to International Delmarva in the amount of $154,522.22.
Any questions or comments? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Before I go on, I was, I meant to recognize, is Nancy here tonight, Nancy Robertson? Nancy is not, okay. We thank Nancy for volunteering again. This is, I think, her third reappointment here. So she's been a faithful server of Poplar Hill. I'd also like to recognize our esteemed delegate, where is he? He's hiding over there. Delegate Carl Anderton, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Nice to have you back. I bet you it's good to be home.
Good to be home, Joe.
Thank you for all you've done for us. We appreciate it.
Glad to do the change.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2832.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Who's going to present the resolution?
Mr. Tillman, do you mind? Okay. This is a resolution of the City of Salisbury to modify the annexation agreement for the area of land previously made a part of the corporate limit of the City of Salisbury known as the Merritt Mill Road Smith Annexation, effective as of February 27, 2014, through the resolution number 2356 and located on the southerly side of enbinding on Merritt Mill Road east of the intersection of Merritt Mill Road and Philip Morris Drive. Whereas the City of Salisbury through resolution 2356, effective as of February 27, 2014, annexed the area of land known as the Merritt Mill Road Smith Annexation. And whereas the annexation of the area covered in resolution 2356 was subject to the terms, conditions, and agreements of certain exhibits, one of which was an annexation agreement, Exhibit B, dated January 15, 2014. And whereas the resolution 2357 was also passed by the City of Salisbury, which adopted an annexation plan for the property. And whereas Penrose Properties, LLC, the new owner of the property, has requested a modification of the aforementioned annexation agreement for its development known as the Merritt Mill Townhouses. And whereas the existing annexation agreement allows for 6.5 units per acre for a total of 72 units, and Penrose Properties has requested a modification to the annexation agreement to allow 6.9 units per acre for a total of 75 units, as reflected in the proposed site plan. And whereas Penrose Properties has also requested a waiver of the affordable housing contributions for 67 units, that the project meet the National Green Building Standards with Energy Star New Homes in lieu of the LED, the lead, and to allow Penrose Management Company to perform the same role as the homeowners association normally would perform. And whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing to address requested changes in the aforementioned annexation agreement, forwarded the requested changes to the Maryland Council, the City of Salisbury, for review in a recent work session. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to accept certain proposed modifications to the aforementioned annexation agreement, now therefore be it resolved by the Council, the City of Salisbury, that proposed modifications to the annexation agreement to allow 6.9 units per acre, to waive the affordable housing contributions associated with 67 units of Merritt Mill Townhouses, to require the project to meet the National Green Building Standards along with the Energy Star New Homes in lieu of lead, and to allow Penrose Management to perform the same role as the homeowners association are hereby accepted, and be it further resolved by the Council, the City of Salisbury, that proposed site plan in lieu of the original concept plan contained in the original annexation agreement attached here too, as Exhibits A and B are accepted, made a part hereof, and be it further resolved by the Council, the City of Salisbury, that in accordance with the local government article, statutory requirements concerning annexations, the Council hold a public hearing on the modifications to the annexation agreement hereby proposed on May 29, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Council chambers. At the City-County Office Building, and the City Administrator shall cause a public notice of the time and place of said hearing to be published, not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which had notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council, the City of Salisbury, will hold a public hearing on the resolution, which date shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of the publication specified above. And be it further resolved by the Council, the City of Salisbury, that this resolution shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passage, subject, however, to the right of referendum as contained in the local government article of the Maryland Code. That's it.
Okay. Questions?
Line 32 to 36, we're compelled to provide that funding, but that's where we offer the...
Um... 32 to 36.
No, not 32 to 36. Where is it? Right now. The Affordable Housing Waiver.
30. Yeah, that's the affordable.
Yeah, that's 45. Is it 45 to 50?
No, it was 32 through, 32 to 36.
Beginning on 47 to waive the affordable housing contributions associated with 67 units?
Yeah, 32 to 36. It is 32 to 36.
The state law provides for it. I don't think anybody's compelled to do it.
It's a part of their, it's a part of the local investment into the affordable housing project.
Yeah. Generally, when projects like this, the local government has to do, make their contribution, and this is what they state as their contribution.
When we apply, or when they apply, the developer applies to the state to get the funding. They have to explain what the local support is, what the city and county have done. And I think typically, we either provide a resolution, the council would provide a resolution, or a letter saying, you know, we're providing XYZ support. So at some point, we provided, you know, some, 2014, you know, some notification of support. And I think the only basis for providing it that way for us is just that because it's affordable units, making a contribution to the affordable fund, that always gets waived by the city. But only in the case of affordable units. Otherwise, housing developers don't get a waiver.
Okay. So that's something we committed ourselves to prior.
At the time that they applied for the approval.
2014, I believe. Yeah. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 2832, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes three to one. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2479 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
Ordinance number 2479 is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2018 general fund budget to appropriate funding to the Business Development Marketing Fund. Whereas the city has sold $1,883.34 worth of merchandise at the newly-created Downtown Salisbury Visitor Center as of March 5, 2018. And whereas the initial budget transfer was completed in October 2017 in the amount of $925.48. And whereas the city would like to return those funds to the Downtown Visitor Center marketing account on a regular basis to make sure the visitor center has a healthy stock of merchandise, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase account 11600-555512 marketing by $957.86.
Any questions or comments? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2479 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2481.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudisill. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2018 general fund budget to appropriate the funds received from the recovery and recycling of brass shell casings at the Salisbury Police Range to purchase service weapons. Whereas the members of the Salisbury Police Department have retrieved, stored recycled brass shell casings from all firearms training at the Salisbury Police Range. And whereas the recycling of these brass shell casings through Delmarva Recycling has produced a monetary return for the efforts put forth. And whereas the Delmarva Recycling has paid the city $2,497.50, which was placed in the general fund. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department has used for the funds received from the recycled brass shell casings in the small tool account 21021-546009, which is used in part to purchase service weapons for new police officers, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase general fund revenue, Delmarva Recycling account by $2,497.50. Increase the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2481, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2482 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
It's an ordinance of the, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland for the period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019, fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandum in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained, that, paragraph one, the tax levy be and the same is hereby set at .9832 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property, and at $2.81 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as railroads and utilities. And at $2.40 per $100 of assessed valuation for all other personal property, subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the water and sewer fund for the debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. In paragraph two, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2018, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, excuse me, by the Salisbury City Council, that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at 4:30 PM on May 7, 2018, in room 301 of the City-County Government Office Building located at 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. And be it further ordained by the City Council, that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. And the schedules mentioned therein are attached.
If I might, just for the public's information, we received the budget a week and a half ago, I believe, Mr. Mayor. And we had one full day's work session regarding the budget. And we have another one scheduled for tomorrow, and that will start at Wednesday. Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday at noon. No, not tomorrow. Yeah, Wednesday at noon, and that's open to the public, so if anybody wants to come for the balance, that they're welcome to do that. And then we will, we will have another meeting if necessary, but I think we should be, based on where we are right now, I think we're in good shape to finish up the majority of the budget on Wednesday. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make any general comments about the budget?
Well, I'll share a couple things. One, there will be a budget press conference where we'll get into the details on Wednesday on the Riverwalk near the new amphitheater in downtown. Public's welcome to come to that. And a couple other things, you know, the, unlike last year where we, you know, had some pretty substantial conversations about tax rate structure and homeownership and things like that, it's a flat, flat tax, so no increase to the tax rate this year. On ordinance, I know we're not there yet, but on ordinance 2483, we'll talk about water and sewer, I think as, as all the council members know, but the public probably doesn't. That is the, that includes all of the recommendations of the consultants. But I think we've got an opportunity to really dig into those numbers now. We received that report right as the budget was being created. But there's, so there's two things that I think we can get into substantively. One, the rates, and two, our EDU fee, both of which I think are things that we can moderate a bit. And I hope you'll agree with me on that. And then, you know, again, flat, no growth in the, in the general fund budget, you know, but, which made for some tough choices, certainly, but continuing to focus on the same priorities, you know, continuing to grow the economy, significant increase in a focus on neighborhood services that we'll talk about a bit, homelessness reduction, youth development, those, those things that we have put a premium on in the last few years.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2482, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2483 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by 8% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2018, and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of the Water Sewer Department. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the Council, the City of Salisbury, that the following water and sewer rate schedule be adopted by the City of Salisbury. A, water and sewer rate schedule, Schedule I, metered water changes in city rates residential and small commercial with minimum charge of $23.09 per quarter, commodity charge of $3.45 per thousand gallons. Under the heading Commercial, customer charge $432.09 per quarter, commodity charge $2 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge of $667.77 per quarter with a commodity charge of $1.60 per thousand gallons. Under Schedule II, metered water charges outside city rates residential and small commercial minimum charge $46.18 per quarter, commodity charge $6.89 per thousand gallons. Under the heading Commercial, customer charge $864.17 per quarter, commodity charge $4.01 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge $1,335.55 per quarter, commodity charge $3.23 per thousand gallons. Schedule III, metered water charges Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates residential and small commercial, minimum charge $34.63 per quarter, commodity charge $5.18 per thousand gallons. Commercial customer charge $648.14 per quarter, commodity charge $3.01 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge $1,001.66 per quarter, $2.42 per thousand gallons commodity charge. Schedule IV, sewer charges in city rates residential and small commercial, minimum charge $57.03 per quarter, commodity charge $8.55 per thousand gallons. Commercial customer charge $1,077.34 per quarter, commodity charge $4.97 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge $1,661.85 per quarter, commodity charge $3.98 per thousand gallons. Schedule V, sewer charges outside city rates residential and small commercial minimum charge $114.08 per quarter, commodity charge $17.11 per thousand gallons. Commercial customer charge $2,154.68 per quarter, commodity charge $9.92 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge $3,323.71 per quarter, commodity charge $7.98 per thousand gallons. Schedule VI, sewer charges Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates residential and small commercial minimum charge $85.56 per quarter, commodity charge $12.84 per thousand gallons. Commercial customer charge $1,616.01 per quarter, commodity charge $7.44 per thousand gallons. Large Commercial Industrial, customer charge $2,492.77 per quarter, commodity charge $5.99 per thousand gallons. Schedule VII, sewer charges sewer-only customers under quarterly in-city rate, it's going to be $72.94, excuse me, $72.94 for one to two fixtures, $109.42 for three to five fixtures, and $157.26 for six to 20 fixtures. Under the quarterly outside city rate, it's going to be $145.88 for, for one to two fixtures, $218.85 for three to five fixtures, $314.52 for six to 26 fixtures, excuse me, six to 20 fixtures. Quarterly urban service district rate, it's going to be $109.42 for one to two fixtures, $164.12 for three to five fixtures, and $235.89 for six to 20 fixtures. For every five fixtures over 20, for the quarterly in-city rate, it's going to be $64.85. For the quarterly outside city rate, $129.69. And for the quarterly urban service district rate, $97.26. Schedule VIII, commercial industrial activities, and that's going to be, annual in-city rate will be $373 for each fire service. Annual in-city rate will be, for each standby operational service will be the same amount, $373. Annual outside city rate for each fire service will be $746, and for each standby operational service, $746. service, $746. And the definitions below, I, I mean, would you like me to go on and read those?
No, I think that's fine. That covers the basics.
So we basically have the rates out there.
Yep. Any, any questions or comments?
Yeah, there were a couple of questions that we received in email from the council. One regarding capacity fees, you know, again, the capacity, the recommended capacity fee would increase from where we are as the lowest currently, and so any, any new entity wanting to connect to our, our water and sewer, the lowest on the peninsula, down from about $11,000 or around $3,700. So that rate increasing is something that was proposed by the consultant. You know, we need to, I think we need to have a conversation about where we want to be, and that's kind of a business strategy. I understand that it's them buying into the system for all of us who have been paying for, for years, but, you know, a business strategy needs to be discussed about, you know, when will you discount, when will you, you know, we have the bank, the EDU bank right now with approximately 300, a little bit less than 300 credits that we need to discuss. The second thing we were asked is the, about the equity model, the equity model where it would essentially be, there would be discounts for low-income persons of low and moderate income. That, that does exist elsewhere, and it's certainly something that we can adopt, and I know it was part of the presentation, so something worth discussing. The work that began last year on the monthly charge and direct debit, so, you know, it was spread out rather than everybody having to write a check quarterly, that will be implemented. The work's been going on. The system was implemented last year, so the, the work has been going on in terms of setting up munis in order to accommodate that, requires several different pieces of software and, you know, several improvements to our systems, but something that is going to be possible within, or not possible, implemented within this fiscal year. And then, and then with regard to the capital projects that were recommended, I think the question exactly was what if any of the projects on the CIP for water and sewer could possibly be taken out? One thing that came available today is an analysis of, of old bond money. As you know, we've been cleaning up bond pools for some time, of leftover remains from bond pools, and a significant amount of old bond pool money was found today that will be bringing forward legislation for reallocation, all in Water and Sewer Fund. So resources that we won't have to spend cash out of any of our reserves or out of this year's budget. So more good news to the, to add into your deliberations that I think help the bottom line.
That is good news. Yes. And I think as, as the mayor had alluded to, and I, I think I can speak for us on the council, if I can't speak up, but I think that, I certainly believe that, that we can do something on the 8%. I think if we look at our goal, which is actually to, to reduce and get back cash positive, I think that that's going to be, if it takes us three years instead of two years, is that a big deal? But I think 8% is a pretty significant hit.
I'm sorry, and not to question our consultants, but another thing to think about is that, you know, at the rate of growth that we've experiencing the last few years, I mean, it's been significant, we can expect that new users will be in the system and will assist in that bottom line.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the consultant's analysis is the sky is falling. But, I mean, I think we, you know, we have, there's concerns, but, and I think it's, again, going to be a deeper discussion this week.
Yeah.
And I don't think the sky's falling, but I think we're in a spot that we do need to get on a good plan and a path and, and.
In the, in the business world, the consultants generally, if they're going to err, they're going to err to the conservative, very, very conservative side, and I think that we need to take that into account, because the sky isn't falling, but by the same token, we need to take some appropriate action to get us back in line, and I think we'll be able to do that in a very, very orderly manner.
More to the point, it's the sky fell.
Yeah.
And, and you need to raise a bunch of money, and, you know, I, I think we all agree that, you know, it's been more gentle than that.
Right. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2483 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2484 for the first reading.
So move.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda, Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for fiscal year 2019 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed, whereas the fees, charges by the city, excuse me, whereas the fees, fees charges by the city are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget by the City of Salisbury, and whereas the fees listed in the attached FY 2019 Fee Schedule, Exhibit 1, are an attempt to identify and list all fees, some of which are revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Salisbury, and whereas some of the fees may have been inadvertently omitted from the schedule, any existing fees not listed in the 2019 Fee Schedule shall remain as currently set forth in the Salisbury Municipal Code. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 FY 2019 Fee Schedule shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury, and the amounts set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended.
Questions or comments?
I just want to say, every year this, since we started doing this, it's getting clearer, it's better, and thank you for implementing that.
All credit to Keith and his team.
Mr. Cordery's here, I think, isn't he? He's hiding out there.
Yes, there he is.
I can still see you. Mr. Cordery and his group have done a remarkable job in, in simplifying the process, and we want to thank him for that. Okay. Now, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2484, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Before I forget, anyone who's interested in, and has several days, can go onto the website and read the entire budget, if you so choose. Go to salisbury.md, and then there's a blue content box with a mayor's proposed budget in there. Just click on that, and the budget will come up, and you can look at the whole entire budget, okay? Just as a reminder.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may?
Sure.
Just to give credit where credit is due, if you click on that blue box, Proposed FY19 Budget, and it's loading very slowly, because I wanted to tell you what page. I believe it's the third page, and, you know, it's loading very slowly, so I'm not able to do that in time. It's the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, Association, Award, Budget Award that the City of Salisbury received for last year's award for the first time, which, you know, part of the analysis of, of that organization determining who receives that distinguished award is legibility to citizens. So, you know, Chris and, and Keith and Keith's department do a very good job trying to, although it's a long document, trying to make it very understandable to everybody. It's the fourth, fourth page, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for last year's budget, and, and we will be submitting every year for that award now, now that we've won it. So the intent is to make this a document that people can understand, you know, what, what we're doing in our community, and how every dollar is carefully applied to the challenges that our community has and the objectives our community has.
And I think Mr. Boda said it, said it well. Since I, since I've been on the council, which is now for four years, each and every year, the budget, I will tell you, the first year that I was on the budget, we spent at least six eight-hour days review, going over the budget, and it was just, some things are here, some things were there. You look at the budget now, and it's established, it's set up, it talks you about, talks about history, and it, it's much, much easier. And actually, it's as close to a business model, a private, a private business model that I've seen, and it works really, really well. So again, thank you, Keith. Ms. Nichols, do we have any requests for public comment?
We don't, but I think there are people who just didn't sign up.
Delegate Irtan, you look like you want to say something, so.
I think you said Irtan. Anderton.
Irtan. I think that's the second time I've done that.
That's right. You got it.
Maybe I did it on purpose. Delegate Anderton.
Don't you worry. All right, real quick, let me pull this one thing up here. Cool. It's good to be home. I had a great session. Two weeks ago tonight, we were going through some pretty fun stuff on the House floor as we were heading towards the end of session at midnight. I want to go back real quick. Four years ago, I came here, told you I wanted to go to Annapolis. One of the things we wanted to fix was our road funding. How we use the revenues, a portion of the gas tax that had been cut, that the city had lost 90%. When I was in Delmar on the council, we went from $160,000 to $2,000. And so, at that time, Salisbury was getting $799,000. This year, we passed a bill that restores 90% of that money back for the next five years, steady funding, and it's been an interesting journey. We've worked on it every session, trying to get the House and the Senate to agree on something, and, and we did. So, starting next year, the city will be getting 1.329 million for streets and sidewalks throughout the city. So for everybody who's wanted to blame the council members for the past four years about the roads, you can do that starting next year.
Thank you.
Absolutely, you know, but it was awesome being able to get something like that accomplished this year. You know, you go into an election year, you know, you, you don't know what to expect, but working with the governor, with the Speaker of the House and Senate President, just being able to find a way to make it happen, and it was awesome. It was a collaborative effort, it was a committee chair, you know, it was a Republican from the eastern shore and a Democrat from Montgomery County, you know, as a committee chair, Democrat from Anne Arundel County. All that stuff was set aside, you know, the point was to fix what was taken, just to restore things back, and we had some great things in the budget, you know, $500,000 again to go towards the Main Street project. I see that, you know, that's still underway, and, you know, it's been neat driving around, being back home. The new Burger King's open, Rural Farms is open, you know, the old Burger King is empty. It'd be really cool if Bojangles moved in there. I don't know if anybody can do anything about that, but, oh, shh, oh, so you're telling me there's a chance. All right. But it's just, it's good being home, and I look forward to seeing you all around the neighborhoods as, as we get back into the swing of things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate.
Can I just, may I just add that, you know, in the last few years, just so people understand how much this helps, in the last few years, from sidewalks, curb and gutter programs, street paving, Main Street and other major street work, you know, we've been spending millions of dollars a year, and, and there was, there was a contract with the state that our municipalities and counties had with state government, and, and the state violated that contract, not you, but the, you know, in 2008, the state violated that contract, and they continued to tax the citizens with the gas tax.
Yeah, still paying the same gas tax, paying more, actually.
And yet it wasn't going to our roads as promised.
Right.
And, and now, an increase of nearly half a million dollars a year back to our communities, back to our, our city.
Just to you guys, yeah.
Just into our streets. I mean, it's an incredible, incredible achievement, and I know you've worked hard for it for years, so, thank you.
Absolutely, brother.
Thank you, thank you.
That's why I wanted to go, I just wanted the opportunity.
Well, it's good for, good for all of us.
I don't think we said that it was Delegate Anderton's bill.
It was.
It was his bill.
I was the lead cosponsor, yeah, I was the cosponsor. We, it's myself and Delegate Bino from Anne Arundel, we did it every year, and we would flip-flop on it each year, and, so, yeah, we've been working on it since 2015, 2015, 2016, 2017. We thought we had it last year. We thought we did. I was a little, I was a little upset about that, but then this year, we figured out where we went wrong and.
Well, this year, we also, we went up there.
Yeah, you guys were there, it was awesome, yeah.
And we had 135 people in the chambers for the hearing.
Yeah.
And they were, the committee was sitting there going, because we kept walking in, and they kept looking, and then it was standing room only, and they usually don't let people stand.
Yep.
And then when we hit the Senate for the same thing, the Senate, the chairman, had each person that was in the room state their name and from where they were from, and you could see the rest of the committee.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it was the right time, and certainly with, with our delegation, and believe me, our delegation fought hard, along with Carl, for this, and it's, it was greatly, it's greatly appreciated, because remember, all the potholes, and I keep, I always say that potholes aren't sexy, but they need to be taken care of, but think what we could have done. The total amount for the, since we lost it was.
About seven million.
Seven million, six?
Between five and six million.
Between five and six million dollars we lost when they took it away from us. Can you imagine what we could have done as a city if we didn't have to take a bunch of that money that we lost out of the general fund? And that's sad, because we could have been light-years ahead of where we are, but right now, we got it coming back, and it's good news, so.
Yeah.
You can't tell we're excited about it, but it's, it's really exciting.
Oh, I'm pretty stoked, I ain't gonna lie, it's pretty cool, yeah.
Thanks.
It's also when you get the opportunity to say, you know, people come, when they knock on your door this year and they say, you know, hey, I'm going to go do this, there's a chance they may actually do it, because that's one of the things that I said, I'm going to go do this, and, and we did it. Plus, real quick, in the hearing, City Council President was filling in for the mayor, it was a traffic accident you were behind, I think, coming in, you were a couple of minutes.
Oh, yeah, they shut down the bridge.
Right, yeah, but he, he got there right as they were testifying, and, so the City Council President was reading his notes from his cell phone, and it was pretty fun watching that. You know, he kept doing this.
Glasses didn't, glasses didn't help. As long as it got done.
It got done, man, it was good. Having you guys up there really meant the world, it really did. Anytime somebody from home comes up to Annapolis, it's just like seeing my mom almost, almost mama, almost. All right, thank you.
Not, not to beat a dead horse on this, but just, just for people's edification, because of that funding and our de-politicized paving process, the infrared camera system that determines the quality of the street, Northwood Drive, Newton Street, Middle Neck Drive, Harbor Point Drive, College Avenue, Riverside Drive, Middle Neck Drive, South Park Drive, South Boulevard, Federal Street, and Logan Street, all get paved next year. Arlington, Alexander, Alexander Center Street, Decatur, East Railroad, Handys Meadow, Pemberton Drive, Three Sections, Roger Street, Van Buren Street, Wayne Street, Power Street, Anne Baker, Barclay, Benny, Northwood, Phase 2, Lake Olive, West Chestnut, East Chestnut, Riverside, South Park Drive, Phase 3, Church Street, I, all of these streets will get paved in the coming three years because of that work, so it's, it's got a real intangible effect.
Great. We do have a request, Pam Zepetix.
Yes.
Pam, please come to the podium.
I would like to talk about the apartments that are going in with Penrose and Merritt Mill. There's several things that I feel about this. I think one of the biggest things that we have is that we do not have sufficient signals, stop signs, those types of things, over by the MVA and the Food Lion, we don't have any of that, or Old Ocean City and Merritt Mill. You're going to add 76 new units in there. They say that they've already done a traffic study, better look again, it's bad, it's bad now, and they're not even built. The other thing that I would like to talk about is if you allow this to be built over there, what are you going to do about low-income people that many of them will not have a car? How are they supposed to get around? How are they supposed to get around? There's no bus system. They have a problem. I mean, it's inevitable that if you leave a bunch of children with nothing to do, they are going to find something to do. If they have no place to go, because we have no parks, we have no basketball courts, we have no baseball fields, we have no nothing like that to accommodate Penrose. I don't mind if Penrose goes in. That doesn't bother me. But just like you need parking stalls, you need to accommodate for children and adults. And there isn't enough. I was at the county hearing the other day, and they're lessening the parking spaces. The rule is 97 or something like that. I forget exactly what it was. And they're taking it down to 70-something. Well, that's 20 that they could easily use, or they could take that 20 and put it into a basketball court, a volleyball court. You're for the youth. The youth have nothing at our end. Most of the people at our end are older Americans that, like myself. I mean, we do have children, but the majority of it is older adults. And we're going to add these children in there. What are they going to do? What do you have for them to do? I just don't think that we should allow more apartments to go in, not unless you're willing, just like parking spaces, to put parks, ball fields, those type of things. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I heard your name, but I didn't catch it.
It's Pam.
Pam.
Pam, I'm sorry, Pam. Pam Jake. Just to respond with two thoughts. You know, I think everyone agrees that adequate public facilities for all development are important. Two things to know about that location. One, I can't remember what, but I know that the development does include playgrounds and park space.
Todd lot.
So I know that will be included in the development by the developers, not by the city. But the other thing to know is that the question of require, or allowing or not allowing the development is really only about the 73rd, 74th, and 75th unit by right, without the city's involvement or even coming to the city council. Any developer could build 72 units on that property. So the question was only about building 75 versus 72. So that was, that was, and that was what the council had to consider, that difference of those three units.
Okay, I'm just giving you things to think about.
Oh, absolutely. And I think those are important things to think about.
But other children in the area need a place to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments for the goodie order from the council? All right. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.